Good afternoon, Milpitas. I'm your 2022 Board President Kelly Yipchuan. Welcome to the meeting of the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which aligns with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for opening meetings. On January 25th, 2022, the Board enacted the AB 3621 in accordance with Executive Order N-122. Tune into our hybrid-style Board meetings online on either Zoom or YouTube or in person inside our boardroom. Public comments can be made while you are logged into Zoom or if you are in person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. If you are unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. For our virtual audience, you will see the instruction for public comments on your screen. Our communication specialists will briefly go over them. For our in-person audience, please go to the podium when you are called on. Instructions for both are also listed on each agenda. There are copies available at the back table. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. Our communication specialist will take it from here.
Thank you, President Yipchuan. As she stated, if you are watching via Zoom, you are registered on the Zoom platform. If you would like to make a public comment, you will click the hand icon that will indicate your request. We ask you, please, just wait to be called on. We'll call the names in the order they are received. Once we do call your name, we'll enable your audio. You'll take yourself off mute, and you'll have two minutes to speak. And we just ask that you please be patient. President Yipchuan will call on you at the appropriate time. Members of the public may address the Board on any subject that does not appear on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.2A and .3 preclude any action. As an unagendized item, no response is required from the Board or district staff, and no action can be taken. However, the Board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. Please note that the Brown Act, Government Code Section 54954.3 prohibits members of the Board in commenting or engaging in discussion during the public comment portion of the agenda, except when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker, provide a reference to staff members for factual information, or request a staff member to report back to the Board on any matter at a subsequent meeting. We do offer special accommodations for our Board meeting. If you do need any special accommodations, please contact the superintendent's office at least two business days in advance. We'll see what we can do for you. Our meetings are broadcast live on both Zoom and YouTube, and they are being recorded. On the Zoom platform, if you would like live transcription, closed captioning is available. You will just click on the closed captioning icon, and the live transcription will appear on your screen. Lastly, if there are any additional documents that do not appear on the agenda, those are public documents, and we have them available for members of the public. On that, back to you, President Yipchuan.
Thank you very much, Scott. So let's do roll call. Would you please do roll call for us?
Sure, here we go. We have Board Member Si.
President.
Board Member Liann.
Here.
Board Clerk Nio.
Here.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Here.
Board President Yipchuan.
Here. Okay, thank you very much, Scott. Our student Board reps will not be here this afternoon. Okay, I'll move on to item number three, closed session announcement. In closed session, the Board did not take any actions. Okay, for item number five, we will be doing the flag salute.
Open session agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed something here.
Motion to approve the open session agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Norwood.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to review and approve the open session agenda. Can you do the roll call, Scott?
Certainly. Board Member Si.
Yes.
Board Member Liann.
Yes.
Board Clerk Nio.
Yes.
Vice President Norwood.
Yes.
President Yipchuan.
Yes.
Passes five out.
Thank you very much. So we're moving on to the flag salute. Vice President Norwood, would you mind leading us in the flag salute?
My pleasure. Ladies and gentlemen, remove your hats. Put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag, United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands. For our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, do we have any comments from the public?
We have no public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item seven, MUSD 2018-2021 strategic goals. Build a culture of "we" that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success. Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students, and staff. Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion in learning for their future careers. Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. Identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments. Eight, Board Group Agreements. The Board Group Agreements are provided for the Board's ready reference as a reminder of our conduct as elected officials. Per Board Bylaw 9001 amended on November 26, 2019, Board Members and the Superintendent agrees to: Keep learning and achievement for all students as the primary focus. Ask questions for our own understanding. Be open and honest with each other. No surprises include unapproved communications with law enforcement, news media, regional elected officials on behalf of the district and/or Board. Be aware that our behavior in the community reflects on us as a team. Communicate proactively with each other about topics, questions, and challenges in open session and in advance of public Board meetings in compliance with the Brown Act. Participate in professional development and commit the time and energy necessary to be an informed and effective leader. And number eight, actively support the culture of "we" in action, deed, and opportunity to serve the students and parents of the Milpitas Unified School District. Number nine, Board Communications Requests. This part of the agenda provides school Board Members the opportunity to report on their activities as elected representatives. School Board Members may request the placement of items in future Board Agenda, relay information from the community, or request information from staff. The student Board Representatives are not here today, so they will not report on their activities. Reports are limited to 90 seconds each. Shall we start with Trustee Honglian?
I have nothing to report. Oh, actually, I do. I've attended the Milpitas Adult Education Breakfast on Wednesday along with Superintendent and Vice President Norwood, and also attended the Historical Society event last night. Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Michael Tsai.
Hello, everyone. In the interest of time, I'll keep it brief. I joined the Town Hall Series with Attorney General Rob Banta and a number of other activities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Clerk Nio.
I'll concede my time.
Concede the time.
And I'll concede my time as well. Thank you very much, Board Members. So we're moving on to item number 11. No, I'm sorry, we're moving on to item number 10, Reports. Are there any... So we're going to have public comments will come after each staff presentation.
And actually, I shouldn't have had that on there. We're straight to action items.
Okay, we're moving on to item 11, Action Items. So time for public comments will come after each staff presentation. Discussion or after motions are for Board Members to deliberate. So A, Results from Parcel Tax Survey, Superintendent's Office.
Thank you, President Yipchuan. We have with us this evening Jessica Polsky from EMC as well as Joy Kumar from TBWB and their team members. And they are going to share with us the results from the polling that they did on renewing our parcel measure. And so we would like for the Board to hear the report, ask questions, and then provide direction. Assistant Superintendent Wendy, would you like to add anything to that?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, then we're ready.
Hey, thank you so much for having us. In the interest of time, I will go ahead and share the slide deck that I have for you today. Please feel free to let me know if you're having trouble hearing or if there are any other technological glitches along the way. And you should see the cover slide. I will go ahead and talk you through the results of the recent survey of likely voters here in Milpitas Unified School District. With a quick note about the methodology. This is a survey of just about 400 likely voters in Milpitas Unified School District. The data are weighted to reflect a likely June 2022 electorate. We did use mixed mode methodology, meaning that we reached voters in a number of different ways, both through live telephone calls on landlines and cellphones, as well as online by email and text invitation. The survey was conducted late January through early February and was offered in multiple languages. And as you'll see throughout the presentation, we do have some questions that have been asked over time so that we can compare results and look at where things have been consistent or have changed. So a quick summary of the key findings, and then I will go into the detailed results. What we see is that Milpitas Unified School District does receive positive ratings on the job it's doing, particularly when it comes to the quality of education and the job teachers are doing. While the majority do show some sensitivity to taxes, over two-thirds of voters agree that it is important to maintain high-quality schools, even if that means raising taxes. We see support in this poll for a measure to renew the parcel tax at the current rate with annual adjustments is above the two-thirds threshold required to pass. However, the vote for a renewal with an increase does not receive support from two-thirds of voters. We see that maintaining core programs in reading, writing, steam fields, and attracting and retaining high-quality educators are particularly important to voters, and that additional information, especially about the fiscal accountability provisions that would come along with the parcel tax measure, the community benefits of investing in schools, and the positive impact of STEM and CTE programs are helpful pieces of information in conveying the benefits of a measure to voters. So now we'll take a look at the more detailed data. First, this question that we have been asking here in the district for quite a while. As you can see, it is not having to do with the school and the school district itself, but rather an overall question about how things in the area are going in general. Do you feel things are going in the right direction? Or have they gotten pretty seriously off on the wrong track? So this measures overall optimism or pessimism, with the portion saying things are going in the right direction on that blue trend line and the portion saying things are off on the wrong track on the red trend line. So you can see there are a majority, 58%, who are optimistic about how things are going, and 24% who are pessimistic, say things are off on the wrong track. And this compares more favorably than what we saw back in the 2017-2018 timeline when we left this question. Moving into some of the ratings of the job the district is doing. What you can see here is that the majority, two-thirds, give a positive rating to the job the district is doing overall. And strong majorities also rate the quality of education and the job teachers are doing positively. We also see majority positive ratings when it comes to the job the district is doing responding to COVID-19 and student academic achievement and test scores. And then voters are divided when it comes to the management of district monies. Looking at how some of these questions have looked over time, we're showing you here on the top the most recent poll results, where 66% rated the overall job the district is doing positively and 24% negatively. That compares pretty favorably to what we've seen historically. And the positive ratings are up from 56% the last time we asked the question in June 2018 to 66% in this survey. We're also seeing some consistency, consistently positive, in fact, ratings when it comes to the overall quality of education. Slightly improved rating there on the job the teachers are doing and on student academic achievement and test scores. And when it comes to the management of district monies, we've often seen throughout our asking about this question that voters are pretty divided. But the positive ratings here have actually improved since back in 2017 from 26% rating the management of district monies as excellent or good to 39% rating that as excellent or good. So some improvement here. Now, this question is one that we have asked over time here in the district to help us understand the perception that is out there of the need for additional funding for schools. So you can see we've asked over time, would you say that the public schools in Milpitas Unified School District have a great need for more money, some need for more money, only a little need or no real need for more money? What we're seeing on the top of the slide overall in this most recent poll is that 26% say there's a great need and 38% say there's some need. And when you look at how that compares over time, it is very similar. If you look on the bottom half of this slide, we see what we hear from those who are district parents and also voters. So the sample is 23% of our overall sample who are parents. And among that group, we still see the vast majority, 70%, who see at least some need for additional funding. But the percentage who say that there's a great need is just slightly smaller than what we saw last time we asked the question in 2017. So we also asked a few questions to help us understand general sentiment about taxes. So we ask, do you agree or disagree? I generally oppose increases to property taxes regardless of what they are used for. And you can see 57% at least somewhat agree with that statement. 40% disagree. So there's fairly high level of hesitancy about new taxes in this area, and that's consistent with what we have seen over time. Another set of questions to help us understand how people are feeling about taxes and the management of money. On the top there, do you agree or disagree maintaining high-quality local schools should be a top priority even if it means raising taxes? The vast majority, 69%, do agree with that statement. 27% disagree. So we get over two-thirds who agree that this is a worthwhile investment. When it comes to the question, I trust the district to properly manage my tax dollars, we see the majority, 61%, agree with that statement. So moving into a potential ballot measure. On the left-hand side, you can see the question that we presented to respondents in the survey. It is a 75-word ballot question that could appear on an actual ballot. So we presented this question and asked if the election were held today, would you vote yes or no? And when we asked this question, which is to renew the $84 annual parcel tax with annual adjustments, we see that 69% say they would vote yes on this measure, and another 3% are initially undecided, but when prompted, which way do you lean? They lean toward voting yes for a total of 72% support. And we see 23% inclined to vote no, and 5% are undecided. So we see support above the two-thirds threshold that's needed for passage. We looked at two different models. So we looked at what happens when we look at those voters who are likely to vote in June. So a model that reflects the demographics of June voters, and then a model that reflects the demographics of those who are likely to vote in November. And we don't see really any difference between those two models. So what this tells us is that in the district's consideration of timing, these data do not impact the level of the decision about timing for a measure. We also wanted to take a look back at support for ballot measures for Milpitas Unified School District over time. So this slide shows what happened in actual elections going back all the way to March 2005 when there was an unsuccessful parcel tax measure. And then all the way through the poll results, all of the bars that you see in purple are poll results. The bars in blue are measures that passed. And then the one in red is the measure that failed. So you can see what's interesting is that voters have been supportive of ballot measures from Milpitas Unified over the past decade, and also that we're seeing support today for a potential parcel tax renewal, similar to the level of support that we got for the 2018 bond measure. So we also followed up with a question to understand if voters would be willing to support a measure that renews the existing $84 parcel tax with a $19 increase. So we presented this idea. If the measure renewed the current parcel tax at $84 with a $19 annual increase, would you vote yes or no? And you can see here, compared with the left-hand side of the slide, which is the initial question, would you renew the measure with annual adjustments? Where we saw 72% support, we see support at 64% total yes for a renewal with an increase. So it doesn't meet that two-thirds threshold. So continuing with the detailed data here, we did ask a series of questions to help us understand the most important outcomes or projects that could be funded by a parcel tax renewal measure. We asked about each of these items, and we asked on a scale from 1 to 7, where 1 is not at all important and 7 is extremely important. How important is each of these to you? And what you can see are the results, and we're showing them based on the portion who rated each one as a seven, extremely important. And the ones, the items that are bolded, are those items that appeared in the actual ballot question that we tested. So rising to the top, you see maintaining core academic programs in science, technology, engineering, arts, athletics, and math, with a majority, 56%, saying that's extremely important, and another 32% somewhat important, for a total of 88%. So the vast majority almost universally consider this important. Similar results on maintaining core academic programs in reading and writing, attracting and retaining highly qualified educators, preparing students for college and careers, ensuring educators have the tools to prepare students for the future workforce, preparing students for the workforce, and so on. As you move down the list, what's clear from this slide is how important all of these projects are, with those on the top garnering the highest intensity. But really, all of these are important to the vast majority of voters. We also presented a series of statements with additional information about the benefits of a potential measure. And we asked, how convincing is this as a reason to support the measure? And you can see here, all of these messages that were presented over the course of the survey are themes that are important in conveying the benefits of the measure, particularly those here on the top. The first one having to do with the fiscal accountability provisions. The second one highlighting the community benefits of this measure. The third one really highlighting the essential role that schools play in our community. The COVID-19 crisis helping bring that to light. The fourth one, that the measure will provide innovative programs in STEM and CTE. All of these are important messages in conveying the benefits of the measure. And the remaining pieces of information that were presented over the course of the survey, these are also helpful pieces of information. The intensity may be a little bit lower, but still more than 70% or up to 70% consider these convincing statements. So we do know that this information is important in conveying the benefits. However, once this information has been presented, we did ask again and present the ballot question again. How would you vote on a measure to renew the $84 parcel tax with annual adjustment? And we don't see a difference here. We see that support is still strong at 72% total yes. We also presented a series of opposition statements, so things that could be said by an opponent of a potential measure to see which ones present particular vulnerabilities. This one on top now is not the type of the measure. Does get some traction. 61% consider that a convincing reason to vote against a measure. We also pointed out the annual adjustment. So the price would go up every year. That is convincing to 55%. And then this notion that the schools really don't need more funding because they're getting funding from the federal government and the state. These are, again, things that could be said by an opponent, whether or not they are true. What we see when we ask after those opposition statements have been presented, given what you've heard, would you vote yes or no on a renewal measure? And we do see support drops to 65%, so just under the two-thirds threshold, demonstrating that in a very negative environment with opposition being prominent, there could be some vulnerability. So in conclusion, we do see that the district receives very positive ratings from voters overall, and the importance of maintaining high-quality schools is certainly widely recognized. Renewal of the district's $84 annual parcel tax appears feasible for the June 2022 election. However, a renewal with an increase falls short of two-thirds support. We see voters consider the programs that would be funded and the benefits of a parcel tax measure to be very important. But tax hesitancy is also high, and a measure could be vulnerable in a negative election environment. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And we have a couple more slides that Joy from TBWB would like to talk through. So I'll go ahead and advance to those two slides, and then we'll take questions.
Thank you, Jessica. Good evening, Members of the Board, Madam President. I just wanted to go through quickly what were the next steps that you would see if you were to move forward with putting a resolution together and doing a renewal for the June election. You can see on this slide that June 7, 2022, is Election Day. That means that you would need to call for the election by March 11. So just a short, less than a month away, but certainly plenty of time since you have an upcoming Board meeting that would meet that deadline. We would work with your attorney to put together that resolution and qualify you for the ballot. The big question that would need to be made in order to do that would be to finalize what type of election that you would like to do, whether you would like to move forward with a straight renewal or consider that annual adjustment. If we move forward to the next slide, this is our immediate next steps. We are working with the district right now to send an informational mailer out to the community, letting them know that you're considering renewing your parcel tax. And based on your information tonight, we'll finalize that and have that sent out to your community in the next few days. We'll also work with your attorney to finalize a resolution should the Board decide to move forward. And then we are targeting your March 8 Board meeting if you were to decide to move forward tonight to put that renewal measure on the June ballot. At that point, once you vote, it would need to go to an independent advocacy committee. The district can always provide information about the ballot measure, but you can't advocate or ask voters to consider to vote yes or no. So that independent advocacy campaign committee would be who would take that up, and they would work ultimately to inform the community about the advantages of voting yes on the potential measure. So I just had two quick slides tonight to go over those, but I'm happy to answer any questions as well or provide any input. At this time, I do see some vulnerability around the annual adjustment. I think based on the poll results that we've seen, our best recommendation would be to move forward with a straight renewal of your existing parcel tax. And you would always have time to consider whether to do something else. It does appear that it could be possible to move forward with an annual adjustment. The polling results show that people support it with positives. But the June election is still a few months away. Things could change, and we do know that it is vulnerable to those negatives. So if we wanted to go the straight renewal route, that would be the most direct.
Thank you so much for the presentation. In regards to the district parents, do you have any data as far as the level of time those parents are in the district?
The the parents that responded to the survey?
Correct.
No, we didn't probe further. We simply asked if they had a student attending Milpitas Unified School District. So again, I want to highlight that this isn't representative of all district parents, but rather it's a portion of the likely June electorate who are also parents of students attending the schools.
Yeah, appreciate it. No, that that data that shows, and if you can bring up that slide back in regards to the parents, district parents seeing the need for additional funding in the district. It's interesting, the COVID times, parents haven't necessarily been on campus to necessarily see the needs in our district. And so that's my wonder, as far as with that data being at 34%, whether or not these parents actually see the need.
Can you see that slide?
Thank you.
There we go.
Do you, trustee, no, do you mean physically see the needs?
Correct, physically see the needs, because there's a difference between understanding and actually seeing physically the needs that are happening at the schools.
And so they would physically see the needs because they would have opportunities to volunteer in the classrooms and at the school sites and be able to see how the programs are impacting learners.
Correct.
And so they haven't had necessarily the same kind of interaction with programming and education the way that they did before COVID.
Correct.
Thanks.
Sure. And I would just point out from this slide as well that those who were sampled who are also parents, among them 70% see a need for additional funding, which is above two-thirds.
When does our parcel tax expire?
June 30, 2023.
So why do we, so why do we do this now? Well, why are we considering this now when it's not till June 30, 2023?
Because the other opportunities, if not June, would be November. And then we would, the only one between November and June would most likely be a special election where we would be carrying the full weight of the cost.
Thank you.
Speaking of cost, how much is the cost for this? When we're looking at upcoming?
We don't have a cost for this one.
Oh, oh, so there's no cost?
No, there is a cost. We have not asked the registrar of voters what the projected cost would be.
Oh, you have a ballpark estimate? How much was it last time?
Are you talking about the regular election? I mean, if we're going to do to place it this June, the cost normally is not much. I would say estimate maybe 50K. But if we're doing a special election, as Cheryl mentioned, the next year in between, then that cost can be very expensive. At one point, we researched it will can go up to 300 to half million dollars. It depends on if there are any other items will be placed in that during that special election.
Okay.
Because the way it works, the way it works is depending on the numbers of measure items, all of those entities that have a measure have a shared portion of the cost that is taken on by the registrar of voters in order to conduct the election.
So if I understand you correctly, based on my original question, we're looking at making a decision or taking action before March 11, before March 30. Because one of the factors is it's either 50K for this election potentially, or if it moves, or if we have to do potentially a special election in 2023, that could run us between 300,000 and 500,000. And the and the and the cost during an election cycle is based on the number of measures and those types of things because the costs are shared.
Right.
Thank you for that. One question, I noticed that there was one question around renewal. But but the renewal question wasn't a part of the polling. Can you explain to me a little bit about how the renewal question played in comparison to the other questions and how that process went?
So the question that we presented in the survey was
You can bring it up, please?
Sure. Is right here. So to renew expiring local school funding that cannot be taken by the state, maintain core academic programs in science, technology, engineering, arts, athletics, and math, attract and retain highly qualified educators, and prepare students for the workforce, shall the district's measure be adopted extending its existing $84 annual parcel tax, providing approximately 1.6 million annually for eight years, with senior exemptions, independent oversight, annual adjustments, no funds for administrator salaries, and all funds benefiting local students? So this is a, would you renew the measure at $84 annually with annual adjustments and all these other provisions? So that's the adjustment, I mean, the the renewal question. The one that we asked subsequently, is this one right here? If the measure renewed the current parcel tax at $84 with a $19 annual increase to do the things that we mentioned, would you vote yes or no?
I noticed that in this one, there's a difference in language in terms of with the $19 increase to improve. So I guess I'm looking at the difference in the language of the ask in the in the trailer part. Because in the first one, you talked about the renewal at the 84 to maintain all these other things. And then when you did the other one plus the 19, it didn't seem like it was packaged in the same way.
That's right. It's a shortened, oh, I'm sorry.
So go ahead.
I just meant to highlight that this is a shortened version of that long ballot question. We did summarize it to capture the gist of what we were asking, so as not to overtax respondents with a law, another long question.
Okay, thank you. At some point, superintendent, I would I would like to see comparative parcel taxes for the region.
Oh, sure. I think we actually have one that we did about this time last year. I'll see if I can pull it up.
Thank you.
If I may, I could just say this part, because you do have a year for to renew your existing parcel tax. You could consider looking at a June election and trying for the COLA. And if for some reason that did not pass, you would still have an opportunity to go on the November ballot or also the standalone spring ballot, which would be the mail-only ballot. The issue is, of course, each time you'd have to go back, you'd have to pay for that election again. So June and November are your cheapest options. May, as you've heard, would be more expensive. But that is three opportunities to pass the parcel tax before it fails. I will, however, warn Cupertino, who we've also worked with in the past, did try to pass their parcel tax and renew it several times with an increase. And again, every community is different. But they were never successful. And ultimately, I think they're facing their parcel tax expiring now before they could even get it renewed. So there are conservative approaches and there are aggressive approaches. I think that's the question before you.
And I'd probably say there are fully informed approaches. And that's why we're here, to ensure that we are fully informed so that we can move forward what's best for our staff, our students, and the families in the community that we serve. So I appreciate those those comments.
I have the data, it's from last year, or actually from 2020. But it gives us a sense of where the different school districts' parcel tax have been. So I'll go ahead and share my screen.
Oh, a quick question. Are you able to speak to what's been going on in San Francisco with their school district and the parcel taxes there? I know there's been a lot going on over there.
I can, I assume you're speaking to the Citizens Initiative, which was actually, the school district yourself can't actually do a citizens initiative by law. It it has to be done through the city ordinance. What they did is they did do a parcel tax through a citizens initiative where people collected signatures to increase the parcel tax and allow that money to go to the school district. And it allowed them to pass the parcel tax at 50% plus one. Of course, as we all know, the really hard thing about parcel taxes is that they typically require a two-thirds vote of people voting in the election. So 66.7 have to vote yes in order for you to succeed at your parcel tax. So being able to do a citizens initiative and get a 50% plus one would is a huge benefit. Unfortunately, not many school districts fit exactly within a city's boundaries where it would allow them to do that. That is where I don't think that that would be an option for your district. The other thing I would say is that a citizens gathering initiative takes a lot of long-term planning and has to be done over several months before a targeted election. So you would need much more lead-in time to do something like what San Francisco did.
No, it's 20th one, June 2020. I did. Okay. So I'll scroll through where it says expiration date. If it says measure P was, for example, on Campbell, it means that it was defeated at its last election. And again, this is data from June 11, 2020.
So if you can give a quick summary, where are we at with comparable, in comparison to comparable districts?
Towards the bottom. Berryessa is our neighbor, and they're at 209. Evergreen just renewed it. How much is Evergreen's, Joy? I'm sorry, not Evergreen, Berryessa?
Berryessa is actually much closer to you guys. They are in the $80 range. I think it's 89.
You do?
Madam President, tonight, we're looking at getting this information. Are we looking, are we going to be taking an action or providing direction?
I believe we have a very limited window. I think March, right? March?
March 8.
March 8. And we need to decide if we want to move forward with it so that the team can get to work.
That's correct. We need, we need direction. And in particular, direction on a straight renewal, renewal with a increase or renewal with annual adjustment. Annual adjustment, for example, could be 3%, which on $84, 3% is around $4.
And that's the COLA one that she was referring to approximately?
Yes. And if you think about it with the COLA, there's about 95,000 parcels. So even if it was like a 2, 2 and 1/2% COLA, that would bring in almost another 200,000, which is two teachers.
Do we happen to know for those districts that did fail in renewing their parcel tax, whether their enrollment were increasing or decreasing?
I don't know, but I can surmise that considering that Milpitas and Morgan Hill are the only two with increasing enrollment in our county, that the others could have had decreasing or stagnant.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. From a hypothesis standpoint, obviously, there seems to be a better need here with the enrollment status in our district and the need to supplement some of the programs that we would like to provide.
Yes, our enrollment does continue to increase, not quite as fast as before COVID, but it does continue to increase. And what our current measure provides us is programming around science, technology, engineering, and math. And as we've talked about many times, innovation is essential because if our learners don't have the experiences that learners in other school districts have, it puts them at a disadvantage. And as we look at the skill set that is needed for the workforce of 2030 as outlined by the McKinsey report and also the World Economic Forum, it's imperative that we provide our students with experiential learning that allows them to tap into being creative, iterative, flexible in their thinking, ability to work with others from different backgrounds, cultural experiences. And that means that we need to provide the resources to our educators so they can do more experiential type of learning, especially in the tech areas. Because as we saw on COVID, the tech industry is the industry that continued to grow while the service sector was cut in half. And so if our learners don't have the skills, the next time a crisis comes around, they will be part of the group of people who has limited work opportunity or no work opportunity. So in order to be a leader and what we can do for our kids, we need to have funding so that we can do more creative instructional design. And especially because in our district, we have something called Stratford, which is expanding. And Stratford has class sizes of 1 to 12. And so that's what we're competing with.
I don't know who could answer
I don't know who could answer this question, but can, can someone share with me, why are we looking at June and not the November? What is the advantage of doing June? And do we have enough time? If we are going to call for election on March 11 and the election day is June 7, which will leave us 12 weeks, do we have enough time to do everything to make sure that we will have this tax pass? We will. So we are looking for the direction for June and not November.
Not only are we looking for the direction of June, we're also looking for the direction of what should the ballot language encompass? So that's where it's simple renewal, increase, or COLA adjustment.
And then, Joy or Jessica, can you also speak on the importance of the percentage of 66.7 that needed to pass?
Sure, I'd be happy to speak on that. As I mentioned before, in order for parcel taxes to succeed, 66.7% of the voters who vote have to vote yes in that particular election in order for you to be successful. Over the years, we've seen smaller turnout elections benefit parcel taxes, simply because people who vote in every election tend to be very invested in their communities, and they tend to be the type of voters who support their local schools and vote yes. We're also able to encourage parents to participate in those smaller turnout elections. That's one of the reasons that makes June really attractive, is because we could mobilize those, A, very active voters, and B, parents, to help make sure that we get that two-thirds that we need in order to be successful. In November, with the gubernatorial election going on, it's a little different of an environment. Again, your election cost may be lower. It's a little bit further away. We don't know how things could change or be different by that time. It may give you more time to do some outreach and planning. But again, you've seen how quickly things can change, and that is a risk that you would have to take looking forward to November. So I do think that's a consideration to take. But the two-thirds would be in place, whether it was a June election, a November election, or a special election in May. The biggest change is the cost of that election and who turns out to vote for those elections.
So even if you get like 66.6%, that wouldn't pass?
Correct, yes. Many, many parcel taxes have gotten close, but one or lost by less than 50 votes.
Okay, thank you very much. I think, Sky, I think we have comments from the public.
Yes, President Yipchan, we have one virtual hand raised. We'll go to Robert Jung. We're going to enable your audio. Take yourself off mute. You have two minutes to speak. Go right ahead.
Hi, thank you, President and Board. I'm going to sort of make it two parts. The first part is the value of a June election is exactly what I believe Joy had said was, you know, having gone through these renewals and stuff like that in the past, the more focused that we can be around our target audience, we have more quote-unquote control over that compared to larger elections where other issues may take precedence and less people may pay attention to this particular ballot. So that's why June would be favorable. Certainly, November would be the next choice. And going beyond that, you're getting really close to the point where, you know, you're close to expiring, and if you don't, aren't successful, you basically leave no opportunity beyond to try to recover that, cover the time to do anything about that. Also, I believe our community is heavily, heavily invested in science, technology, math, all the STEM areas. This is further indicated by just preliminary results. As you may know, I'm running the STEAM showcase. And this year, we have over 350 students, over 275 projects, which virtually doubled the amount of projects that we had submitted or that were submitted in previous years. So I believe that there is a strong, strong interest in our parent community for science, technology, innovation. And I would encourage us to take a look at June, just to leverage that small audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert Jung. Do we have any other comments from the public?
There are no virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay. So Board members, if you have any questions or comments? If not, we need to...
I'll make a motion to move forward on the June ballot with, there were a couple of choices. It's flat, annual increase, or what were the language choices?
Straight renewal, renewal with annual adjustments, which would be a COLA, or an increase.
I'll make a motion for renewal with annual adjustments.
Okay, we have a motion.
So let me clarify. Annual adjustment is like $4, based on that $84 that we are having read. Yeah, so that's like, is that right? I heard Sharon said about $4?
That is correct, but it would increase each year. It's a compounding. So it may be a few dollars the first year, but the next year it'll go up a little bit for each 3% because it's on the total. So, and then each year it keeps growing and growing. So over a, you know, period of time, it can actually end up being more than the $19.
Right. So, so in a way, say, if we have a 3% annual increase, our parcel tax revenue is about 1.6 million. So I kind of think, okay, 3% of 1.6 million, that brings us 48K. I mean, 10 years, that's 480K cumulative.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the follow-up question to that, I think you alluded to it. How long of a period is this renewal would be for?
Eight years.
Eight years.
Yeah.
Okay. So that'll be annual increase over the eight years of that time.
Right, and that is also compounding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Second that.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, let's open up for discussion.
Did you want to share the latest data that Wendy has?
Yes, please. Wendy, would you share the latest data?
Sure, I just, well, share, share.
I'm not able to sort it because it's locked, but, so I'll just scroll through so you can see how much there.
So while we're waiting that, I have a question. So with the motion to increase with an annual adjustment, is there a cap on that? There's no, there's no cap, or, I mean...
I believe the cap would be the eight years.
No, like the, okay.
You mean a percentage? Maybe say, and maybe a 3% or 5%? Is that what you mean? Yeah?
Yeah, yeah, because I'm just, for me, I'm just concerned. You know, people are tired of the cost of living going up, like, you know, gas, food, supplies, even the Dollar Tree has gone up, and people are upset about a quarter, right? So with a little bit change of increase, is that going to hurt our chance of passing the parcel tax renewal? That's the question that's going in my head. So what are you guys' thoughts?
And also, I would like to share an strategy, some other districts, they have been used in, was, we can just do, if we do a straight renewal, say, for eight years, and then at least we get it passed. And then maybe in year two, year three, we come back, we look at it, and we realize, oh, there are additional needs. And then at that time, we can do another campaign for, either for an increase or an adjustment. Then you are safe because you know you already have a straight renewal. At least we have $84 on hand, that 1.6 million. And then after, and then in between, maybe two years, three years, four years, when the time it is, is proper, and then you look at it again, and then it'll be more conservative and it's safe. So that could be another strategy to consider.
So the interesting concept you brought up, President Yipchan, as far as the cap, cap on the annual increases or cap as far as the total number at the end of the cycle?
Meaning... No, I mean, the renewal is going to be eight years, right?
Right. I mean, there, it will be hard because each year the parcel also change. And also, the seniors, they are eligible for exemption. So the revenue generated will vary from year to year.
No, so...
Are you saying...
Let me clarify that. So at, was it $84 currently right now? There's two types of caps we can talk about, right? The cap on the annual increase to the compounding annual increase, or the cap as far as it would annually increase only until, say, for example, $100. And so if it hits $100 even in year five, it just stays at that level. So those are two opportunities to think about.
I, it seems that if you were to put that, I'll explain all that in the ballot measure, it would be better just to say an increase.
Yeah, I do worry about confusing voters. What we do see is that not to exceed 3% each year, and that would be in the full resolution and also in the ballot book. But the annual adjustments, you know, would, it would just kind of add up a little bit over time. So I think you are better off either just doing the 3% for eight years, or as was already said, going for the straight renewal this time. And then you have eight years to look at passing a different parcel tax that could add on to this one, maybe when people are feeling a little less stretched once we get past, you know, the current situation. So that is another option that would be available to you, is to seek a second parcel tax. And many districts have done that and been successful at that, just as Wendy had said.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that recommendation. And I, for me, I personally agree. Because we're, you know, in challenging times, it's better to stay safe and just do the straight renewal. That's, in my opinion. And I think that we have a greater chance in passing it. And then in two or three years, we can revisit, right? Because at least we lock this in for eight years. So anybody else have comments, or what are your thoughts?
As I, as I listen, as I, as I listen to all the feedback and, you know, the, the one slide talks about, you know, people are most likely to oppose taxing, or they don't like taxes. And then if it, they also recognize the fact if it depends on something. And particularly, then they would invest in the schools based on the STEM area. So I did take that into account. I believe I also took into account, while there is, while there are a number of things going on around us and our inflation, that our kids and their opportunity to be successful. Let me, let me affirm the question, or ask a question. If we are unsuccessful in renewing the parcel tax, what happens to our programs? Or what, what, what is the repercussion?
We lose the 1.6 million per year, which means we need to shrink the programming that we have. And remember, we are in the people business. So parcel tax means people because people make the programs. And so that means we would have to cut back on people.
So that also means that we've been receiving, at one point, we've been, the parcel taxes have been at 1.6 million for several, for the last eight years, even though the cost of everything has gone up.
Yeah.
And so we've actually have not been able to maintain the same level of programs from when we originally started the parcel tax and got to 1.6 million, because each year our costs increase. But we still only have the same amount of money to do more in our school district as our number of students increase. Of course, there's some other arguments that we're dealing with, ADA versus enrollment and stuff like that. But I'm thinking about that 1.6 today, and I, and I appreciate, Board President, you're saying a bird in the hand is better than, you know, risking, is, 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 is better than the risk. And I, and I have to consider the fact that, well, if we do the same thing that we have now over the next eight years, we're not getting the same bang for the buck that we did, you know, eight years ago. So that's why the, so is there a difference between the annual? I guess I heard the representative say there's the annual increase or there's the 3%?
The 3% is the annual increase, and the board could set what that percentage is. Joy, would you say again how you came to recommend the 3%?
Sure, absolutely. So there are different ways to look at an annual adjustment. You can go with the county or state cost of living. However, that number can be volatile and can go up or down. If you look at the last five years of history, though, it's right about at that 3% line. So that's one way to look at why 3%. On average, the state and county average has been about 3%. The other way to look at it is to look at your budget and look at how you have already built cost of living increases into your existing budget. And in speaking with your superintendent and Wendy, the chief business officer, did hear that you do actually use 3% already in your budget as a cost of living increase for planning out future years. So those two seem to mesh very well with factors that are important to you and important to your community, and that's ultimately why we recommended the 3%.
Thank you.
And do you normally find that the voters understand, you know, the increase of, you know, from the COLA or, you know, setting a cap in there? Is that something is easily understood by our voters?
I think, I mean, what we saw in the, in the voter survey, I think, is very similar to what I see in other communities. And that is that annual adjustments, which is what people will read in the ballot language, a little bit more nebulous, right? And, and when I hear annual... And, and when I hear annual adjustments, I think something can go up or it can go down. So that might make me more supportive than I actually am if I think that it could also go down. Now, that's an extrapolation that we can't pull exactly from the data. But just from what I've seen around the state, that's generally what we see. What we do know is that when we tested those negative arguments, including the one that said that annual adjustment is 3% and it will increase the parcel tax each year it's in place, that was a reason not to support the ballot measure. And ultimately, we then saw the measure drop below the 2/3. Now, it was one of three arguments, but all three were sort of around financial uncertainty including that 3%. So it clearly, once people understand exactly what it means, it does impact support. So I have seen them pass. I do think that people like the idea of a smaller increase over time. But I, my concern is around increasing inflation, like you've mentioned, that we are seeing and that that makes people a little bit nervous when they're paying more for other things. If this were, if that were not the case right now, I would say go for the 3%. Go for the annual adjustment because people really like your schools and they want to support them. But the environment right now is, is a little bit cost sensitive. And so if you want to keep what you have and be certain that you can do that, then the straight renewal is the safest option. And then you can always go back to your voters when they're feeling more financially secure and ask for that increase.
Could we ask for an increase and extension?
Yes, so that was the other question that we asked, if it just increased by $19 and we didn't see support for that.
No, my question is, so if we went with a straight renewal and then in three years or four years or so, we determined that we really need to increase it, could we increase and extend?
You could do it that way. But you're, you're existing, this parcel tax will have existed for another eight years, so you may not want to put it at risk. Instead, what you do is you just go for what you need for that separate parcel tax. So for example, if you wanted to increase it by $49, you would just go for a separate, separate parcel tax for an extra $49. And then you'd have the two in place and you'd be receiving funding from both of them.
I would say, based on that information that everyone has shared, I would be willing to amend my motion to do the straight renewal with the, creating a timeline to investigate the opportunity for the straight opportunity when things are more fiscally sound. I'm, I'd like to amend my motion to, to that.
Thank you very much, Vice President Norwood. So we have a motion, sorry, an amended motion for a straight renewal with the option or to...
Well, we could just start, we could just start with the straight renewal and then we can somewhere put on the agenda the fact that it is something that we're paying attention to. Based on, because again, I, I know that there's a lot of factors here, but I, I really feel that, you know, even with my amended motion, we're not recognizing the fact that the 1.6 value, what it once was, is not the same and it won't be what it is. And, and you talk about not taxing voters or going to the voters multiple times. I don't know the number of school districts that have been successful with, I heard, I heard it was, some districts are successful, but no one gave me anything definitive. But I, I do want to make sure that we move forward confidently with the parcel tax moving forward, but being thoughtful of, you know, we do want more. We, we are going to need to revisit something like that in the future.
So we have a motion for, from Vice President Norwood to renew the parcel tax, the straight renewal?
It's interesting because they talked about two different type of voter bases. The voter base in June, a little bit more regular voters, a little bit more informed versus the, the one in November that could be potentially swayed by whatever events that are happening then. I actually circle back to the original motion in the sense of I would be supportive of the annual increase for that, for this June election. And if that does happen to be defeated, that gives us more idea of, of going to November as far as providing a straight renewal. But I think the opportunity exists here for the June election.
Okay, we do have a, an amended motion on the table. Are there...
I second the, the original motion because with the $84, the 3% annual increase is And then the second year, it goes to 260. And of course, it compounds into 267 and a 275. By the eighth year, we are still under $98 for the eight years. So I think with the 3% increase is so minimum, it is, is less than a cup of coffee that voters would, I think, would agree too. So I'm, I'm still supporting the 3%.
Okay, Trustee Si, can I hear your opinion, please?
Certainly a lot to take in. And today is February 18th. You're saying March 11th direction, that's three weeks. So I'm going to have to think about this some more. Feels like kind of asking me to make a big decision on relatively short notice. But I, I don't have any comment at this time. Thank you.
I just want, having experienced doing bond campaigns and parcel tax campaigns as a Walker and then also as a member of the committee, I can, I can tell you that the time period that we have from March 8th through June is enough time. Because we do our heavy campaigning in a matter of two months with walking and door knocking. Because times have changed as far as phones go, phone banking is no longer the way that you do your campaign. Joy has shared that they now do texting. So texting and knocking on doors, mailers, I think there is something to be said for shortened windows of time and expediency. Because we know that it's not something that's drawn out and allows for opportunity to procrastinate. It's a driven goal, short time period, get it done. I'd also like to remind everybody that we did actually talk about a parcel tax summer of 2020. So it has, it's not a sudden discussion. It's something we have been thinking about.
You know, I believe, we have, we have an amended motion on the table. And I believe the, the president is asking for if there is going to be a second on that amended motion. If there's not going to be, so let's, so I guess the president is asking with discussion, is there a second on the amended motion?
I'd like to second, I'd like to second the motion that's on the table of just a straight renewal.
Okay.
So Wendy, I see that you're... Is that a signal of saying that, that is a safer, safer bet for all of us here?
Well, this is a really a board decision, so don't look at me. I mean, this is truly each of your, I mean, your decision, what is the best for the district. I mean, both strategies will work. I mean, it really depends.
Okay, but as our CBO, can you share your, your thoughts or your recommendation? Or I know it's our decision, but we'd like to hear from you as our CBO, what your thoughts are.
Well, in a conservative way, we know, based on this polling result, we know is we have overwhelming support if we do straight renewal. So it seems like we still have to work very hard campaigning, do a good job to, to pass this parcel tax. I mean, honestly, with a 3%, it is a reasonable increase. But with the current situation with COVID, with inflation, and we don't see the polling show, the data shows. But the data shows and we might have a support, but with a, with a very close margin. And so my question to you, to the board is, how much risk you want to take? So that'll be an indicator.
Yeah, that there, there wasn't really support for an increase. And we need to have 66.7%. Even one vote less than that, it won't pass.
All right, with that, I will change my vote, just because, I mean, at the end of the day.
We haven't voted yet. We haven't voted. We had a motion and a second. We haven't voted yet. We're still having the discussion.
Yeah. I will put this out there that this is providing direction to the staff because we still need to approve the resolution come March 8th. So there is, and I believe they shared the timeline as far as additional steps that have to be taken before the, the March 8 review of the resolution and approval before getting into the ballot. So there, I believe there are additional steps that need to be taken too.
So that sounds like the motion would be to provide staff direction, in the direction of moving forward with the June election. And that's the, that's the primary motion.
We do need to know what direction you want for the measure language because we need to start preparing that and working with our legal counsel so we can have all the documentation ready to go.
Yes, this is an action item, so they need directions as to, we're moving forward, but are we doing a, a straight renewal and, you know, a COLA? Or is it some other kind of increase?
Well, I think we said 3%. So it wouldn't be the actual COLA. They would say annual increase. And they're hovering around the number 3% because that's the number that we use within our budgets now on average.
Right, but at this time, we have a motion for a straight renewal and a second. If there's no further comments, we will have Scott take roll call.
Okay, roll call, vote. Board Member Si?
I'll hold my vote.
That's an abstain.
Abstain, okay. Board Member Leanne?
Yes.
Board Clerk Niu?
No.
Board Vice President Norwood?
Yes.
And Board President Yipchuan?
Yes.
So it passes 3-1.
And one abstain.
And one abstain, yes.
All right, thank you very much for that detailed discussion. Thank you very much, Joy and Jessica. So now we have directions as to what we're going to do. Thank you, everyone, for your presentation. So now we're going to move on to Action Item 11B, enact AB 361. Superintendent's office.
AB 361, the board can only enact it for 30 days at a time. And so we have it on the ballot, excuse me, we have it on the agenda for the board to discuss and determine if you want to continue with AB 361 for another 30 days at the conclusion of this 30 days.
Yeah, the board voted in favor on January 25th. And so it would expire February 25th. And we don't have a meeting before then, so that's why it's on here now. March 8th is the next meeting.
Thank you very much, Scott. Is there any comments out there?
I have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Move to renew the AB 361.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion to renew the, our AB 361 and there's a second. Any further discussions or comments from board members? Okay, I see none. Let's do roll call.
Certainly, Board Member Si?
Yes.
Board Member Leanne?
Yes.
Board Clerk Niu?
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood?
Yes.
Board President Yipchuan?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
All righty, thank you very much. Item number 12, dates of future board meetings. Do we have that up in there? Okay, we have, our next meeting is going to be March the 8th. It's a tentative study session at 5:00 PM. T tentative closed session at 6:00 PM, open session at 7:00, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube and Boardroom. March 22nd tentative study session at 5:00 PM, tentative closed session at 6:00, open session at 7:00, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube and Boardroom. Number 13, do we have any announcements? Looks like Wendy's the only one.
I have, I have announcements. Next week is February break. Monday and Tuesday are the president's holidays. We would like to remind all of our community at MUSD that there are multiple opportunities for getting tested during the week. City of Milpitas offers testing at the community center as well as a sports center. In addition to that, we, as a district, have connected with Big Bang Art, a nonprofit organization, to provide testing on Wednesday, February 23rd, as well as on Sunday, February 27th. And on February 27th, it'll be located at Burnett, Milpitas High School and Senate Elementary School. Additionally, our parents, caregivers, staff members, you can procure tests and tests at home. And so we request that you test that Saturday or Sunday before returning to school and work.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. There's any announcements from board members? Reminders, announcements, celebrations, none? Okay, so item...
We have one celebration. Ms. Priti Jahari, our executive director, it's her birthday today.
Ooh, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
We'll send to you after the meeting. Okay, so item number 14, I'd like to motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Scott, would you do a roll call?
Certainly. Board Member Si?
Aye.
Board Member Leanne?
Yes.
Board Clerk Niu?
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood?